Good evening. It's 7 o'clock. This is Monday, January 11th, 2016, and Happy New Year to all of you. It's nice to see so many people here tonight. Your presence here indicates your support for public education, and that does not go unnoticed. Thank you very much for that. This evening, we have two special people to lead us in this Pledge of Allegiance. Lexi Saban and Jacob Laterno. Could we rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello.
Hello.
Let's start with Lexi. Lexi Saban is a second grader at Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. She lives with her grandma, grandpa, and brother. Lexi is in Mrs. Hoover's class. Her favorite subject in school is reading. She is a great student and an awesome student leader. After school, Lexi loves to do gymnastics. When she grows up, she would like to be a pediatrician. Jacob. Jacob Laterno is in second grade at Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. He lives with his mom, dad, and brother. Jacob is in Mrs. Steiner's class. His favorite subject is math. He is a great student and a role model in his class. Jacob enjoys spending time with his brother. When he grows up, he wants to be a teacher. Very good. (APPLAUSE).
Ms. Lexi Saban, I'd like to thank you for your participation in our Pledge of Allegiance ceremony during the regular School Board of Education meeting. So here are your awards. And Mr. Jacob Laterno, I'd like to also thank you for your participation in our flag ceremony at the Wayne Westland Board of Education meeting. Thank you so much for your participation.
I was going to say, before they leave, did they want to introduce the special people that they brought with them?
I brought my mom, my grandma, and my granny.
I brought my mom, my dad, my brother, my grandma, my grandma, my papa, my papa, and my cousin.
I think you might have forgotten one other special person that's in the audience. Can you think of who that might be?
Uncle Chris.
Uncle Chris, I forgot.
How about Mrs. Keats?
And Mrs. Keats. And Mrs. Steiner.
Thank you very much. And it's obvious from the guests that were brought by our two young people why there are no empty seats tonight. Item 194.16, roll call attendance, Mrs. Madell.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mrs. Madison.
Present.
I am here, and Mr. Buckaloo.
I am present.
7-0.
And that brings us to item 195.16, election of officers.
Mr. President, may I have the attention of the Chair?
Yes, you may.
I would like to pull my name from the presidency and vice presidency at this time, and also would like to thank you for your year of service. I thought you did a great job as President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Anyone else want to make a comment along those lines?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
I'm only going to be available for the Treasurer's post.
For Treasurer?
I said I might be available for任任的Treasurer.
Okay. So noted. Anyone else? Okay. So it's that time, then. Mrs. Madell, would you conduct the election, please?
All right. Actually, I think that's something you need to do, but if you want me to do it...
Well, I will do it.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need a nomination for the Office of President.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Mrs. Walker for the Office of President for the 2016 year.
And is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there another motion?
I thought we took care of this. I thought we took care of this by asking last...
Well, you still have the off...
Okay.
The question is whether... We declared for office last month, but there is nothing that would change, excuse me, would hold us to that declaration so that we can add ourself or take ourself off of consideration at any point prior to the vote.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to do the nominations all through, or can I move by acclamation?
No, we're going to do a roll call vote now.
Okay. I'd like to move by election of Shawna Walker, President, by acclamation.
Is that a possibility? Okay. I have a motion to approve by acclamation. Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We now have a new President. Congratulations, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you.
Nominations for VP.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Carol Madell for Vice President.
Support.
Have a motion and support. Are there other nominations? Can I assume, sir, you would like to move for acclamation?
Yes, I would. I'd like to move, since there are no other nominations, I'd like to move for Vice President election of Carol Madell by acclamation.
And can we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of having Mrs. Carol Madell for Vice President? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We now have a Vice President. And Secretary.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Dr. Weaver for Secretary for the 2016 year. Support.
We have a nomination. We have a support.
A second.
Second. And a third. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Secretary?
Hearing, hearing, and I'd like to move his election by acclamation.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor of Dr. Weaver becoming our Secretary? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. This is going very well. Nomination for Treasurer.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Trav Griffin for Treasurer.
Second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second, and I would like to suggest that we... Well, I need to ask if there are other nominations. Seeing none, then, I would ask that we move this issue by acclamation. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor of Mr. Griffin becoming Treasurer?
Aye.
Aye. I think we're done. Mr. Griffin, you are removing... You're moving back to a position that you held how many years ago?
1972.
1972. I hope you remember. At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. We need to move, shuffle some chairs, and then we'll move on with...
Well, we're going to go ahead and start back. I'll call the meeting at 7:15, and we'll start with the recognition of item number 196.16, recognition of presentations. Dr. Hamala.
Thank you very much. We actually have three presentations and recognitions tonight, and I'm going to call up David Ingham, Principal of John Glenn High School, to start us off.
Good evening, Madam President. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the other Board members of newly elected officers, congratulations tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce our first recognition tonight, and that's to junior ROTC students from John Glenn High School. As you know, the foundation, one of the foundations of the junior ROTC program is that our students get to practice and demonstrate leadership skills doing many school activities, service learning projects, and especially community service learning projects. And they do a number of these each year. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Senator Hopgood here with us tonight. He would like to make a presentation to our junior ROTC students who have been helping him for several years do an excellent Veterans Day ceremony here in the city of Westland. To introduce that ceremony and Senator Hopgood, I'll ask our senior army instructor, Sergeant Major Stephen Young, to come up and do the introduction and explain the community service event that the students participated in back on November 11th. So Sergeant Major Young?
I don't know if they're...
Think you need to come to the mic, or they can't hear you?
It gets recorded, and that's... It'll then show on television. Otherwise, we can't hear you. We can only see you on television.
Okay. Didn't know it was going to be on TV. All right. Great. So for the Veterans Day ceremony, Veterans Day activity event that we do at the movie, Senator Hopgood continued the tradition of Senator Anderson, and that's allowing the veterans in the area to go to a free movie. And it's been an event that the JROTC students have clamored to get to. I mean, I have to turn kids away to get on this event list, and they are asking me every year at the beginning of the year and sometime in the new, the end of the year, when is this? We want to get involved, and we want to do it. And so this year was no different. Senator Hopgood set it all up, asked us to come out, and our kids get to visit with the veterans from... We had World War II veterans on up to the current wars, and they have learned a lot from these veterans. And these veterans are very appreciative of the time that they get to share with the JROTC students. And the community service is just amazing. They just love to just get together and talk, and these older gentlemen, they talk with these young kids, and the young kids are just trying to get as much information out as they can because this is a... We're the greatest generation from World War II, and we are continuing that with today's conflicts in the world. So on behalf of the Senator, I'll introduce Senator Hopgood. I guess I can read one of these, and then he will call up the students. Do we do it up here, or do we do it down there?
That's fine. Right there is good.
Let it be known that it is with great pleasure that we recognize the following cadets for assisting with the first annual Free Veterans Day movie event. The event was a success due to John Glenn High School JROTC's appreciation of and generosity towards Michigan's veterans. Their display of humility and strength of character made the Veterans Day event one to be proud of. It was a true honor to be able to continue this tradition, and it would not have been possible without these cadets' help and the volunteer spirit of the JROTC program. The palpable sense of respect and honor towards our community's veterans was inspiring to behold, and with these cadets' actions that day, an example was set for those to follow in the JROTC program. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dated to express the warmest of regards and thanks for their cadets, for these cadets' contributions to the first annual Free Veterans Day movie event, and to congratulate them on their excellent representation of the John Glenn JROTC program. Signed, Senator Hopgood and Senator Rick Snyder, Governor.
Just a brief word from my end, and congratulations to the Board members as well. But this is a tradition that was started by Senator Anderson, and I was able to attend one of them previously, and just was really impressed by what went on, by just showing a little, a small token of appreciation to our area veterans. And it was something I really did want to continue on, meeting Mr. Young at the high school. He said, "Give us a call." And so we put it together, and quite frankly, we filled up the theater. We showed Spectre, James Bond movie, and, you know, we're still getting thank yous from the veterans and from their friends and family members who attended with them as well. And I wanted to share that with you guys because you really helped make it all possible. Really, I think that they could feel your appreciation and you're honoring them and respecting them. And from my standpoint, I sure think that you guys had some fun doing it as well. And, you know, that's what it's all about, in my mind, and so, thank you, and if you want to...
Sure.
Cadet Leah Olet? Cadet Christian Kozart? Cadet Serena Hunter? Cadet Alana Rudd? And once again, wonderful jobs. Thank you for helping us out, and we really wanted to show our appreciation, so thank you for your time today, and I'd like to...
We would like to ask all of the cadets, Sergeant Young and Senator Hopgood, to come down to the center. We're going to get one large group picture right in front here. You might need to push all the way back to the wood panel here and kind of group yourselves.
Turn around and look at the camera.
And I would ask that you just return to your seats. We have two short other presentations, and then we'll give you a chance to go home and Our next recognition will be led by Assistant Superintendent Kelly Bowle.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Hamala, and members of our listening audience. Tonight, I would like to recognize Mr. Ali Sayed. Mr. Sayed is the founder and CEO of Hype Athletics and the Hype Recreation Center of Western Wayne for his efforts in supporting district families during the holiday season as well as district employees during our wellness journey. Working through the FRC, our Family Resource Center, Hype Athletics teamed up with the leaders advancing and helping communities to provide Wayne Westland Community School families with 160 full turkey dinners for the Thanksgiving holiday, and he also helped distribute 133 turkey dinners for the Christmas holidays. This initiative was a huge success and allowed the Family Resource Center to provide holiday meals to almost 300 families. Mr. Sayed also is partnering with the District Wellness Program to offer a 30% discount on memberships at the Hype Recreation Center for all Wayne Westland Community School employees. In recognition of Mrs. Sayed's generous support, I would like to request you receive a certificate of recognition from the Board of Education.
Sir, it's been a couple months since we first met, and you've been very busy. And by the way, we really appreciate all the effort that you are doing for the students of our school district. And this is in recognition of your holiday meal assistance programs to our families. Thank you so very much. Without your help, I don't know that we could have done it, so keep up the good work.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you all for all your continuous efforts to serve our students and our families. And it's just, it's been a pleasure to feel welcomed as a new organization to the Wayne Westland Communities. We're committed to serving, and we hope one day we can work with all of you to extend our efforts to all the families that are in need. So thank you.
Thank you. And we have another presentation tonight that I will lead, President Walker. And in your packet, Board members, is a resolution from Wayne Risa thanking you as Board members and celebrating you for your work, along with all of the other Boards in Wayne County. I'd like to thank you as well for your commitment about time and energy to the important cause of teaching and learning and growth for all of our students. We have a couple of special presentations, but before we do that, I would like to share a certificate of appreciation with each of our Board trustees. Charles Trav Griffin, and I'll hang on to these for right now and get them to you at the end. Charles Trav Griffin, Melody Hines, thank you for your work. Carol Madell as Secretary, thank you for your work in the past year. Fred Weaver for his work as the Vice President. Sally Madison as a trustee. Tom Buckaloo as the Board President. But I would like to take a minute and provide a special thanks to past President now, Tom Buckaloo, for his special work and honor. It takes extra work and time to be the President of the Board. You're in charge of all the meetings and making sure they run well, so I'd like to step down for a minute, Tom, and offer great appreciation on behalf of the entire school We'd like to present to you Tom Buckaloo, President of the Board of Education for the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Thank you so much for all you've done over the last... And we have two short presentations, Board members, for all of you, and I'd like to first invite Jennifer Keats, Principal of Roosevelt McGrath Elementary, and her students. They're going to share their appreciation with you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Congratulations to the new Board members, and we are here tonight to thank you personally for all you do for us. So I've brought some friends to represent Roosevelt McGrath, as well as the elementary portion of our district. With me is Gabe Elbadani. A little wave. There you go. Marissa Tilly, Laura-Lai Robinson, Blake Morgan, and Tiara Dunn.
We love M&amp;Ms, and we think you should too. We want to thank you for all you do.
Green is for the inspiration you give each day.
Blue is for your patience in showing kids the way.
Orange is for your warmth and caring style.
Yellow is for the way we make everybody smile. Red is for all the lives you've touched this year.
Thank you very much. And we have Principal Kevin Weber and a group of students from Wayne Memorial High School who are going to represent our secondary schools.
President Walker, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Hamala and audience, thank you for a little bit of time this evening. As Dr. Hamala already stated, January is the School Board Recognition Month. In honor of this and to celebrate from all of our secondary programs, I have several members of the Wayne Memorial High School Senate who would like to personally thank the Board of Education. As a community member myself, a parent as well, and a principal in the Wayne Westland Community Schools, I'd like to thank you all. In a time where we hear more and more about the lack of community involvement, you continue to give two precious commodities to your community. You each give what I call bandwidth. I stole that term... bandwidth. I stole that term from one of my mentors, and bandwidth refers to the, how much information you can process in your brain at one single time. And as a School Board member, you each give up a lot of your bandwidth to help navigate for our schools. And we appreciate that. In addition to the bandwidth, you each give up your time. You make your, you make time, or I should say you allocate time because no one can really make time, for closed-door meetings, ceremonies, board public meetings, events, and more meetings. I personally see Board members in almost every one of our events. You could be at home watching the Golden Globes or the National Championship Game, or the last season of American Idol. However you choose to spend much of your time with us at the schools. So I thank you for your time, your bandwidth, and the continued service that you provide for us. To continue our appreciation, the students with me would like to share their thoughts with you.
Hello, my name's Carmen Mata, and I'm the Executive Board Treasurer of Student Senate. Due to the generosity of the Board and the district funds, I, along with several other students, have had the opportunity to take classes from Wayne County Community College District and attend School of College part-time. These classes have allowed us to immerse ourselves in a college environment, preparing us for college when we get there. Attending classes at School of College especially has placed me in an environment that presents new challenges, valuable experience, and has allowed me to go above and beyond the offerings at Wayne Memorial High School. We can't thank you enough for giving us this opportunity.
Hello, my name is Rihanna Hargenius, and I am the Vice President of the Executive Board at Wayne Memorial. I would like to start off by saying thank you for all the support you provide for Wayne Memorial. Every year at our school, we have a homecoming parade, and without fail, there is always a student or a School Board member in attendance. This dedication truly shows the value that the School Board places on student involvement. Seeing the Board members support our students reminds us of the emphasis the School Board places on student success. We are honored to be able to share these experiences with you, and on behalf of the Wayne Memorial student body, I'd like to thank you again.
Hello, my name is Macy Wolf, and I'm the Publicity Manager for Student Senate Executive Board. Instrumental Music is a program that many districts unfortunately aren't unable to have. However, it is amazing that Wayne Westland Community Schools continue to have a strong and supported program. The support that is constantly shown to young musicians such as myself is immensely appreciated, and we extend our gratitude to all of you. From helping promote the Zebra Marching Band to being present at each band, orchestra, and choir concert, the care and compassion that this room has for Wayne Memorial's music program is clear. Thank you for everything.
My name is Kelsey Weisong, and I'm the Executive Board President of Wayne Memorial. With my large involvement in sports and Senate, I have seen and heard about many of the programs at other schools, and I'm truly thankful for the opportunities that I have at Wayne. We are one of the few remaining schools without pay-to-play sports, which allows our students to be more involved and active within school. Sports gives us the opportunity for scholarships, to make new friends, and have amazing experiences. Most sports would not happen without the support of our School Board and the upkeep of our grounds and facilities. Our football field and track are quality material that all of the sports appreciate. Our alumni arena offers several gyms and indoor tracks to have many sports without conflict. Both Wayne and Glenn have the necessary property for their own cross-country course, among many other unique things. Stock Meyer allows our students to express themselves outside of sports, and having smart boards and other new technology is amazing for our students. I am proud to attend Wayne, and I am thankful for the opportunities that I have here. At this time, we respectfully asked President Shawna Walker, on behalf of the entire Board of the Education, to please stand and come forward to receive this plaque as a token of our appreciation.
If I can pull myself together. This is why we do what we do. This is amazing.
Madam President, thank you, and the entire Board for all of your dedication to our school district.
President Walker, that concludes our recognitions and our appreciations for tonight.
Well, thank you. And once again, thank you. Everyone did such a wonderful job. And like I said, this is why we do what we do, because this is the end result too. So through everything that we go through, this is why. And we appreciate that. And I'm going to give you a second for those, I know you guys, you know, got national championship games and homeworks and things like that. So whoever wants to clear out, this is your time to. I'm going to give you a few seconds to. But you're more than welcome to stay because we got a lot of interesting things going on.
Sally, I need, I need your husband back in your regular spot. Ron, I need you guys in your regular spot.
All right. Thank you. So moving on, we're going to move on to item number 197.16, Citizen Comments, Agenda Items Only.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the time on our agenda that we invite our citizens to speak to tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address tonight's agenda? Seeing none, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to item one, number 198.16, the Consent Agenda. At this time, I would move for a motion.
Move approved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Medell. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison.
And yes, I brought myself up to speed and went through and watched the video and made sure I didn't have any questions. Any homework I needed to do, I've done, so therefore I vote yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Medell.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
President Walker.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to item number 199.16, Review and Approval Business Services and Finance Items. Mr. Larson Scheider.
All right. Thank you, President Walker. On the screen, you have the, just a summary of the budget that I'm going to go over, and also in the packet, I believe that you received the overall budget. I'm not going to go over each line in that packet. Like I say, I'm just going to summarize. First, just to give you a little background, the Budget Amendment was completed in early December prior to the holiday break. This is usually a point in time during the school year that we have significant actual information to update the budget. Our fall student count is complete, which provides Michigan Department of Education the information to calculate each district's funding. We compare our initial projections to December State Aid Financial Stats Report and make the appropriate adjustments. The only major revenue item that is missing off the December report is special education reimbursement, which is normally on the January State Aid Report, but this is really a calculation that we can perform basically to the dollar, and we do that. And that's reflected in the amendment. Significant financial events subsequent to December 2015 will be evaluated with the impact to the budget calculated and communicated to the Board when it happens. Going on to the first slide, to sort of follow along with you. The amendment was reviewed and discussed in detail with Administration, the Finance Committee on January 5th, and Union Representatives on January 7th. Once approved by the Board, the amendment, the amended budget information will be placed on the district website tomorrow morning. We are working with our union groups to develop a budget format to present to district staff. District staff have been instrumental in balancing the budget through wage and insurance concessions starting district-wide in 2013-14. Additionally, a priority-based budgeting process involving staff was used to budget for 2015-16. I believe reviewing and discussing the budget with staff is important for future budgeting. This will be, we're planning this sometime in late January or early February. The first slide going on to, oops, I guess I should go to the first slide. The amendment is consistent with the July 1 projection of basically a break even. Our per pupil funding at that time was known as 7,391, so that's the same as what was in July 1 budget. Our student full-time equivalent of 11,603 for funding purposes was the same amount that we projected July 1, which is really amazing to me to come right on that amount. Going on to expenditures, payroll is based on staffing as of the December 4th payroll, with subsequent additions and deletions that we knew of at that time. The decrease from the July 1 salary amount was $600,000 to $53.8 million. Prior year actual was $54.7 million. The employee benefit selections as of the November open enrollment period are known and in the budget is really consistent with the July 1 budget at $13.1 million. Prior year actual is $12.8 million. MIPSers, the July 1 budget was based on the legislative stated rate of 36.31%. Actual rate is slightly higher based on state funding. We get that MIPSers reimbursement, so we had to adjust for that. The increase from July 1 is approximately $500,000 to $20.2 million. Prior year actual was $18.9 million. FICA is based on the three-year average of approximately 20, or 7.24. The actual rate is 7.65, but due to some items that are not Medicare and FICA applicable in our wages, we reduced that to get the budget down to a, you know, pretty much as close as we can get it. So the decrease from the July 1 budget was $130,000. Total budget on that is $3.9 million. Prior year actual was $4 million. Priority-based budgeting performed by schools and departments caused some information to be delayed, but there was nothing major that impacted the budget. This next slide, this is just an overall to show where we started the year. The budget as of July 1, total revenues 104, 70, 268. Expenditures at that time were 103, 984, 730, for a surplus of $85,538. When we have the budget complete, all revenues that we know of and expenditures, the January total revenues will be 104, 165, 203, and expenditures 104, 161, 485, for a surplus of $3,718. This is a decrease in that surplus of $81,820. Really, the major takeaway from this is that is a break even. So $80,000 versus $3,000 is not that much on a $100 million budget. The last slide that I want to go over is, this is really the, if you can see this, the red line is our fund balance at the end of the year, and the bars are that year's surplus or deficit. And you can see going into, you know, we had, we've been running deficits. The first year that we had a surplus was 2010-11. That was the year that we closed five schools. And then in 2011-12, that is the year that we lost $470 in state aid, and also we lost our first half of our Wayne Westland Language. Then in 1213, we lost our second half of the Wayne Westland Language. At that point in time, we had lost $945 per pupil, and that reflects about a $12 million loss in funding over those two years. Going into 13 and 14, we were down. And the spring of 13, we met with all of our bargaining groups. All groups took a 5% wage concession and healthcare changes. At that time, we said that we would break even, and that's why I think the $3,000, $85,000 is a significant point in time where we show that we're breaking even based on the acts that the employees helped us with, and also starting with priority-based budgeting. So if there are any questions on the detail, I'd be happy to answer.
We don't have any questions at the time.
I don't have any questions on detail because on the finance, we went through them. I, you know, I, I think we need to talk to the employee groups here tonight and tell them that we understand that this district would have been not only in terrible deficit, we lost $12 million in two years, and all of our, all of our Headley Amendment funds, not counting everybody else's loss of 475 per student. So we wouldn't be here where we are today on a break-even budget, even though it's $104 million. We're the fourth-largest school district in Wayne County, and we have to express our appreciation to them. And, and I think in the discussions with the Finance Committee and Board and say, you know, we're going to stay the course, and we're going to, we're not going to have an emergency manager in this district. Both the Administration and this Board feels that way. I think I'm not speaking out of turn on that one. And hopefully, we're going to look to the future and hope that things get better on a state level because of all of our funds. Basically, we can't, we can't go out and ask the public for millage anymore. It's only on state aid. We have the lowest per pupil funding of any district in the state, unfortunately, because the loss of the eight mills on the Headley Amendment. I remember when that happened, when Headley passed. But you know what? We're back to break even, and we're going to have to look to the future and say that we're going to work on whatever it takes to, to make this district one that hopefully we can restore some of the benefits that, and the money that our employees gave up in order to make this district a sovereign one. And I don't have the magic wand. Nobody does. We don't know what the state's going to do, but I, I do appreciate very much their efforts, and I appreciate the Administration's efforts. As long as I've been involved in this school district, we've had, our Department of Finance and Dr. Carmichael is here too, have been, had, had an award given to us. So I mean, we take this very seriously in this school district. So I'm just looking to the future and hope that things get better. The economy's picking up, and I think they will. And, and I appreciate all the sacrifices that the people in this district have made, both community and employee groups, and hopefully, things are going to get better in the future. And if they do, I have confidence that this Board of Education Administration will restore what can be restored absent having us have an emergency manager where tomorrow you might get everything you had taken away from you, and that's not going to happen. This Board doesn't agree with that, and that's the right approach, I think. And look around us in Wayne County. How many districts have gone through that process and see what's How many districts have gone through that process and see what's happened to them? It's not a good process, not something we're going to be a part of, and I think that that's a good start and a good beginning, and I'm looking forward to the future with this board. Thank you.
President Walker, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I just have one question because I am concerned, you know, with the lack of enrollment and the fund balance, and with the Detroit Public School with us, I'm not sure, you know, if we lose like $50 per student, will we have to readjust the budget? Or what will happen with that? Because I'm concerned about that.
If we were to lose $50 per pupil?
Yes, will we have to redo the budget, or how would that work?
Are you talking about the amount the governor had stated he was going to? That was already built into the state aid when it was approved.
Okay.
So that's why we're at the 93, or 7391, so. I know it hasn't been dispersed yet by the governor, but it was built into school aid.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson, sorry, were you done with your report at this time? Can I go ahead and call for the motion?
Yeah, please, please.
At this time, I'll call, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept.
A move by Dr. Weaver.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Griffin. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo.
I vote yes.
Mrs. Medel.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison. President Walker.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to 200.16, representative designations. The first one would be for the 2016 representative for WCA SB, Wakospa. Is anyone interested? I already hold a position on the executive board, so I wouldn't be interested in that, and that's...
I've been doing it, and I'll do it again unless somebody is just going, "Pick me, pick me."
Any objections to Carol continuing on? So Carol Medel would be the 2016 Wakospa representative, and then now we need for B, 2016 MASB representative.
I would like to do that.
I'd like to. Okay, anyone else have any objections or are interested? Okay, so Melanie Hines will be the 2016 MASB representative. Thank you both for your service for this year. Moving on to item 201.16, designation of newspapers. Dr. Hamala?
Yes, this is in your recommended motion, the annual renewal of our recommendations for designated newspapers. It does include the addition of The Telegraph, which was the Inksster paper that we added last year. So it's essentially now the same motion.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Griffin.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buck, uh, Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Medel.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
President Walker.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Okay, moving on to 202.16, designation of financial auditors. Dr. Hamala?
Yes, this again is our annual request, and we are once again asking the approval of Plant Moran as our annual auditor.
At this time, we'll take a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the motion.
Moved by Mr. Griffin, support. Supported by Mrs. Hines. Ms. Hines, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say. You know what? I've known Plant Moran for 40-something years, and they're just the best. They're the best of the best, and we're so fortunate to have them, and they work well with our district in every way, shape, and form. So I'm just happy to have them, and I very much approve this motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Go ahead, Dr. Weaver, did you have something? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Buckaloo.
I vote yes.
Mrs. Medel.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
President Walker.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, with the unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 203.16, review and approval, legal firm representation. Dr. Hamala?
Yes, in your packet, you received a memorandum from Deputy Superintendent James Larson Schidler regarding our legal firms that we've used in the past and their pricing for the year to come. All of the firms will maintain their current pricing as we move forward, and we added additional information for the board in regards to tracking baseline data in regards to costs. So I can't compare it to things in the past as it wasn't tracked in the same way, but we've got a new tracking process to be able to provide more information to the board. And we identify labor and employment, and generally, special education support is the two areas of primary need for our legal services. So a motion to support us in those continuation of firms would be our recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Okay, we'll do move by Mrs. Medel in support of by...
Uh, Dr., or Mr., oh my God. I still got jet lag.
Buckaloo.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. I recall that we had discussed in past that as needed by whoever was using the legal firm, we could cross and utilize maybe a specific firm situation dependent.
Yes, that's what we did over the last year. I think it's worked out well for each of the assistant superintendents, or we have, each of the firms specializes in a unique way. For example, Luskin Albertson has more specialty in special education. Clark Hill has more specialty in business and administrative services. So we found that very helpful, and we would continue to do that. We appreciate the board's support for that. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please, Dr. Weaver.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Medel.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
President Walker.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to 204.16, superintendent report. Dr. Hamala?
Thank you, President Walker. This evening, I'd just like to briefly share a couple of items. First, legislation, as we all know, has an impact on our district, and sometimes it's in a good way, and in some ways, it's a negative impact. So I'm going to share a good way and one that's a little more of a negative impact right now. A new law was created that allows us to hire retired teachers for service in two ways. One is a substitute, and then in a position that is considered hard to fill, and hard to fill is defined annually by the Michigan Department of Education. Wayne Westland Community Schools is currently developing a process to invite our retired teachers to consider employment in long-term substitute positions. According to the new law, the teacher must have retired after June 30 of 2010 and before September 5 of 2015, and they must have been retired for at least one year. In other words, only some of our retired teachers will be eligible for these types of positions. We will continue to use PESG for our day-to-day substitute management as HR, our Human Resources Department, continues to examine ways we can implement this new law. So we are very appreciative that that legislation finally passed, and our teachers who have retired can come back and help us out. Secondly, as you may be aware from the various media reports, the governor signed Senate Bill 0571 into law just last week. This law prohibits local governments from sharing information about a ballot question with its electorate within 60 days of an election. In essence, if, and I'm stating if, we as Wayne Westland Community Schools were to ask our voters to approve a bond proposal or a millage renewal, we would have to communicate all information prior to 60 days before the election, and we would have to refrain from communicating as the election draws near. Legislation always prohibited use of public resources for advocacy, and it had some unique direction for governmental bodies with policymaking duties. But the new law is not even about advocacy. It's about information. It is my understanding that the governor has asked that the legislature reexamine the concerns, and that he even proposed some considerations and alternate things for them to consider in the new law. This is an important issue, and it will have a significant impact on our ability to share information with the Wayne Westland community in the event we would ever have a future ballot question that they have to address. I will certainly keep you posted and certainly encourage those of you here to share your concerns by contacting local legislators. This is, in my mind, beyond belief. Next item I would like to share is our Head Start grant. We've applied for the 2016-17 Head Start grant in a different way than we have applied in the past. Due to changes in the grant and the focus of the federal government in regard to services for young children, we included more full-day programs in our grant application. This will require us to plan for more full-day programs, even though we won't know until next summer if we really will be offering more full-day programs. Holding the planning off until the summer would not be in our best interest because we actually may need to use locations other than Stottlemyre to house Head Start. Hence, we are planning now, and will only use those plans if the grant application requires additional programs in alternate locations. In addition, due to the way the county grant has historically included a number of other entities, and some of those entities were changing their approach to the grant, Wayne Westland Community Schools applied as a delegate under both the Wayne County Grant and the Starfish Grant. Our aim was to ensure that our Wayne Westland students will have Head Start services next fall. We will keep you posted on the outcomes of both the planning and our grant. And last, but certainly not least, our strategic planning meetings are continuing this month. There is an opportunity for involvement for any community member, parent, everybody in the community. We'd love to hear your voice. Please consider sharing your time and ideas by attending a session, and all session dates, times, and locations are available on our website under the strategic planning icon. And that's my report for tonight. President Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala. Moving on to item number 205.16, Board of Education Committee reports, and we have two tonight, and we'll start off with the policy and procedure, and I'm not sure who's going to read that for the policy committees that you...
Ms. Madison, okay. For the Policy, Procedure, and Strategic Planning Committee meeting, the notes are from December 14, 2015. The meeting was from 5:30 PM to 8:55 PM. Members present were Melanie Hines, Sally Madison, Carol Medel, Michelle Harmala. Presenter, Kevin Sutton, Luskin Albertson. Notes were by Michelle Harmala, our superintendent, and community members present were Elijah Hines and Ron Madison. The committee reviewed and provided information for consideration on the 1,000 and 5,000 policy sections. Committee members are still contemplating the section of the Lus, Albertson policies, Rules of Order, on page 5 of draft version 10. The committee believes the administrative guidelines for the policy section 1,000, Board Governance and Operations, are the board, and the board operating procedures, which we refer to as the BOP, and reviewed the revisions of the BOP should take place after approval of the 1,000 policy series. The committee requested that the review of the policy sections 1,000, 5,000, and 9,000 be considered for inclusion in the regular Board of Education meeting scheduled for February 8, 2016. The tentative special meeting for January 28, 2016, will be canceled. The committee suggested the board trustee involvement in the strategic planning process is best handled by trustee attendance at any of the existing stakeholder meetings that suit their individual availability. Trustee Madison will share the committee report, January 11, Board of Education meeting, as I did tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. And item B will be the finance committee, and since I was holding the position of treasurer at the time, I'm going to go ahead and read that report into record. The following is a summary of the minutes from the finance subcommittee meeting. The finance subcommittee meeting met on Tuesday, January 5, 2016. In attendance were Dr. Michelle Harmala, Trav Griffin, Dr. Fred Weaver, myself, John Albright, David Kuhmeyer, and Mr. Jim Larson Schidler. Changes to the original 2015-16 budget adopted by the board at, since June 25, 2015 meeting was presented. Mr. Jim Larson Schidler reviewed these changes with the board at this evening's meeting. A full copy of the minutes is on page 29 of the board agenda, and that concludes my report. Moving on to item number 206.16, citizen comments. Dr. Weaver?
Are there any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 207.16, review and recommendations. Mrs. Madison?
Uh, yes. I'm actually unprepared at the moment, and will go off the cuff and mostly off the heart. This is the second year that we've been humbly surprised with having a little bit of give-back to us as a board, and I don't want to go too much into it and get all teary-eyed and choked up and unable to talk, but I am overwhelmed with appreciation for the complete board to be acknowledged and appreciated, and to have the special little events and functions put back for us. We all serve to the community in different ways, and each one of us as a board member has different ideals and ideas that we all bring a positive outlook into the board and into the community through different facets, whether in front of the lines or behind the scenes, whether it's attending meetings, or functions, or events, or doing homework behind the scenes at our meetings, or throughout the community, one-on-one. And it's not ever a thought in my mind as to being thanked or trying to get something back out of it as much as, what can I do next? Which is part of why I enjoy so much being a part of the strategic planning, is trying to think outside the box of what more can we do here? And it really touches my heart to be able to have a thank you, and to not have that feeling like we should have it. So thank you. And before I do cry, I'll move on.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank all the past officers for the past year, and particularly you, Mr. Buckaloo, and your presidency. It's been a wonderful year, and I enjoy working with everyone up here, and I look forward to this year with the new officers, and hopefully, the district moving forward onward and upward. And I'm an optimistic person because I see that happen. And with, the last thing I want to say is that it's also been a pleasure working with this new administration, Dr. Hamala. I think that you've done a wonderful job, and I certainly appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. President, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to congratulate all the members who have their new positions as officers. I am very excited. When I saw the special on Channel 7 with Brandon Allen with the TED Talks, that was just exciting. I would like to see more of our district reaching out to the media to show the public how awesome our schools are. And personally, like as the new year, as my second year as a trustee, I have my own personal goals, and I do want to work more with trying to figure out how we can increase enrollment and work more with the media to try to really pull those programs out to the public, because we have an awesome school district. And I'd like to thank the children for the different, the programs today. Appreciate us as board members. As President Walker said, it really brought a tear to my eye, because this is why I do this job. I love these children, to see the success. When you have the award ceremonies, the look on the parents' face and the excitement of their children getting awards, this is like the best job I've ever had, and I really appreciate it to be on this board.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mrs. Medel?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to those of you who were elected into officer positions. I am looking forward to another year. I can't believe that the last year went so quickly. Where did it go? And, you know, so moving forward, working with everybody again in committees and sitting here at board meetings, congratulations. Today, I spent my day at, in Dearborn, at a Head Start training program that they offered to all of the agencies in Wayne County, and that was very informative. And going forward, I'm hoping that we can help our parents understand a little bit more of their role in the Head Start program. Looking forward, this is the time of the year we always go into math and science parent nights. So check your calendar, because those are coming up quickly, and before you know it, March will be... know it, March will be here and we'll be into reading nights. And I know, I think it's Elliot, I want to say, has got a book and blanket coming up later this month also. So, some of those reading things are starting to already filter in. I don't know that I can say a special thanks as well as Mrs. Madison did. Good job. And I think anything I say will pale in that, but having the kids show their appreciation, it kind of gives you the trickle-down effect that maybe it is reaching the lower level that, you know, what we do and how much we do participate in what goes on in this school district. This weekend, Mr. Buckaloo, Mrs. Hines, and I got a chance to attend the conference held by Plant Moran. And each year, they offer all kinds of information from financial to legislative, what's on the horizon, legal that is going to affect our school district in the coming year and what changes we will be looking at. So, this year, I found that to be very interesting as things change almost on a daily basis in this state. One of the things I was able to participate in in November was the food service certification. It's called Serve Safe. And I was able to attend. This is not something that is required of board trustees, but my church needed a kitchen manager and they figured since I have so much extra time in my life, let's send Carol. So, they paid for me to attend the Serve Safe. But I got a chance to be in there with our other kitchen people in our school district and from surrounding school districts. And that was so enjoyable. I really did have a good time listening to some of the stories that they had to tell and commiserating on shared experiences in the kitchen and with our food service program. So, that was great. And I did pass, by the way. That was a little scary, but I did pass that test. And congratulations to all of our employees that took that class and did pass and are now officially our kitchen managers. With that said, I hope we have a very good year.
Ms. Meddell. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I look forward to attending the youth mentorship program dinner this Thursday. And Happy New Year to everyone and congratulations to the new officers. And I believe this is the year, we saw it last year, I believe, in my humble opinion. And I would think that we're going to continue to work together in harmony. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you, President Walker. As was said, I attended the Plant Moran-Clark Hill workshop on Saturday with Mrs. Walker and Ms. Hines. And I found it very informative. I heard some things about the impact of the pass-through money for the state public employee retirement fund and how it might affect our fund equity in the way it's calculated. I found that surprising. Also heard some information about Senate Bill 571. Apparently, this went through in such a hurry that the specifics of it are still up in the air. Four things are denied to us as actions, but other things are not denied. And whether they were intended as to be included or whether they're still open to us is going to be tested, I think, in the next year or so. And I do have some hope that the governor's request that the House and Senate revisit that bill and clarify it bear some fruit, although sometimes it doesn't work that way. But in any event, it's called campaign finance reform. And that, I think, was a title given to it somewhat humorously. It isn't reform at all. I was impressed with your presentation, Mr. Larson Scheider, on the budget. I know how hard it must be to try to come up with a balanced budget when you obviously can't know what the expenses are because we're still in the middle of the year, but you don't even know what our revenues are because they're still in flux. And so, my hat is off to you and the good job that you do with that, along with your staff. It was mentioned earlier by Mr. Griffin, the debt that we owe to our employees. I don't know that if we could keep the doors open, if we could keep the doors open, if we could maintain the problems of the programs that we're able to maintain had it not been for the sacrifice of all of our employees, from Dr. Harmala all the way down to the last employee on the payroll. I don't think anyone on this board has lost sight of the debt that we owe those people. And I only hope that there comes a time when we can repay that debt because it certainly is owed by us. Lastly, this past year has been a most enjoyable year. And I want to thank you, Dr. Harmala, and your staff, and also all of my fellow board members for making it an enjoyable year for me. I couldn't have asked for more. Everyone on the board has been most supportive. When I was little under the weather, Dr. Weaver stepped in and pitched in for me, and I appreciate that. It's been a great year and I want to thank everyone for making it a great year. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Once again, I want to thank the pledge, the pledge kids, Lexi Saban and Jacob Latourin for joining, leading us in the pledge tonight. We have some awesome kids in this school district. And I want to say thank you to the John Glenn JRTC for all their community service that they've been doing. They work hard all year long and that just put the ice in on the cake. And I also, words cannot express how I felt about the, how we all felt about the presentation from the kids today. That's amazing. That's better than any if you could ever get is for your kids to do something special like that. I want to say congratulations to everyone in their new positions. I also want to say thank you for allowing me to serve as your president this year. And I will do my best to do a great job and represent you all well. Thank you. I look forward to working with you again one-on-one and see where we can go this year. And with that being said, I just want to say I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Okay, moved by Mr. Buckaloo and supported by Mr. Griffin. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.